Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council Meeting for June 6, 2011 to order. First thing on the agenda as always is the roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene, if you would, please.
Peterson.
Here.
Wyffenbach.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Haddock.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Wa.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, if you do have a cellphone or if you do have a pager, we'd ask that you please take it out, put it in the vibrate or the off mode. If you do need to take a phone call during the meeting, what we would ask you to do is please go ahead and exit and go out into the hallway so you don't disturb the meeting. We certainly appreciate that courtesy. Also, if you have, if you wish to speak to any issue on the agenda or during the public comment period, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, our right, they're over on the media table. If you please fill that out, put your name, and also the item that you wish to talk about. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure we do not overlook you. And with next thing on the agenda as always is invocation. Is Rick here? There you go. Rick Dermerest, I believe is how you pronounce it, is from the Inner Varsity Christian Fellowship at the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. I'd ask everyone to please rise for the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Rick?
Let's pray. Father, I give you thanks that you are good and that you are sovereign, that you are in control, and that you work your ways through us, your people. Lord, I pray for wisdom for the men and women who are going to listen to the issues and make decisions. May they have the wisdom of Solomon. Lord, I also pray for us as we enter into the election tomorrow. Father, may we exercise our privilege and right to vote, and I pray that those elected will serve with enthusiasm and integrity. We pray these things in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
... to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that need to be placed on the agenda? If so, please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to add an item, ad hoc sign code revision task force recommendations.
We're going to call that 93A. Very good. Any additional items to be added to tonight's agenda? If so, please turn on your light. If not, the chair would look for motion to approve the agenda as published with the addition of a 93A, which is a ad hoc task force recommendation for, from the signed committee. Chair would look for that motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the May 16, 2011 regular council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes. Under awards and recognitions, we do have a new award that we're giving out. I'm going to ask Kathy to come up and join me, and I'm also going to invite our recipient, and that is Evelyn Bachmeier. If Evelyn could also come up and join us, please. Come on up here, you guys. Hi, Evelyn.
Nice to see you, too.
Now, this is a brand-new award that we, and matter of fact, Evelyn's going to be our first recipient. As you know, the city of Rapid City over the years has always looked to recognize those that have really added to the community, and in this case, what we're looking for is someone who has led by example as far as taking care of their property. And so, we proudly call this the Yard of the Month as the new award, and this is actually a brand-new program that was proposed by the Rapid City Beautification Committee, and I'm going to let Kathy Rubson just say a little bit about that, and then I'll read the award for Evelyn. So Kathy, if you would, please.
Yes, as Mayor Hanks tells you, this is the first month that I, that we are doing this, hopefully not the last. We need your help in bringing these yards to our attention. The information is on the city website. It's also available to pick up at the Parks Department Office on Canyon Lake Drive. But our, the idea between the, behind the beautification award is to honor those members of the city that are diligent in keeping their yards looking beautiful and in making an improvement to the overall neighborhood. When I was at Harney, Little Lee, or Harney Softball, my great niece would be appalled to call it Little Lee, and coming back from a game, I came down on Auckland, and Evelyn's yard is the first yard you see when you come out of Robinsdale Park, and I was so impressed with her beautiful spring flowers, and then found out that she also has 40 rose bushes. And she has lived in this home for 40 years and maintained it. She has a lovely area in the parkway that is more of a zero scape. It's rock, and it doesn't have, require a lot of care, and I was just so impressed, and I can't wait to go to more games and see how her yard looks in the following months.
Well, Evelyn, let me read this for you, and then if you'd like, you can say a few words.[536.62][536.62](Laughter) They didn't tell you that, did they? There again, this is the Yard of the Month Award. It says, "Presented for your personal commitment to the beautification, maintenance, and overall appearance of your landscape. The city of Rapid City would like to express our sincere appreciation for your passion and determination." Evelyn, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And like I say, if you'd like to say just a word or two, it's up to you.
I really don't know what to say, except that I don't do a whole lot with my, I call it a rock garden, but when the pictures were taken and stuff, the irises were blooming in clumps, and everything was beautiful. Now I have different ones blooming, so.
I will come back.
Thank you very much.
Evelyn also receives every month, the awards are given June through October, and every month, the award winner receives a $25 gift certificate from one, a local business. This one happens to be from Noctegals, and, and so I know you can use it well.
Oh.
And this is, this is for her window that she can put in the, in the window.
Thank you very much.
Let's get a picture real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That is it for our awards and recognitions, but we do have the administration, we need to administer the oath of office to our new growth management director, and so Pauline, why don't you go ahead and come up here, and I'll come down. I'd like to introduce Brett Limbaugh, who is our new growth management director. He comes from Colorado, Commerce City, and we're very pleased to have him, even though he's been working for, what, about a week and a half?
Two weeks. Hi, Brett Limbaugh.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
War and domestic.
War and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office. Of Director of the Rapid City Growth Management Department.
Rapid City, South Dakota.
Rapid City, South Dakota. According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you very much.
Well, don't go anywhere.[813.32][813.32](Laughter) Since this is really your first official acknowledgement, I know that you were introduced at Legal and Finance and Public Works. Just a little bit of Brett's background, he actually, there again, comes from, is from Commerce City, Colorado. Brett actually has a master's in urban and regional planning, which we're very fortunate to get him. He also served as a planning director. He actually started as a planner, worked his way up, and actually was a planning director for Commerce City for about three years. And one of the things that is very unique about Commerce City is the fact that it's the one that's closest to the new Denver Airport, and so they saw dramatic growth during your time there. The other thing that we're very excited about is after he left that position, he was also in the private sector for three years, working with large retailers as far as basically communicating and working out all the details between governmental entities and basically developers in, in large-scale development. So we're very pleased to have him. I believe that he's going to really bring the know-how and also some new ideas into Rapid City, and we're really looking for that. Brett, did you want to say just a word or two?
Yes. Well, thanks, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to let you all know that I'm very excited to be here. The staff here have been great, council. I've had the opportunity to meet most of you, and you've been wonderful. Thanks for welcoming with open arms. I do want to give credit to this staff. I'm very, very fortunate to be working with a group of people that are very professional, know their jobs very well, saves me a lot of training, and I'm really looking forward to moving ahead and trying to streamline some of your processes. Thanks very much.
Congratulations, kids. Thank you, Brett. Thank you, everyone. We're now on to the public comment period. This is the time for members of the public to, to discuss or express concerns with the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. Let's see here, we do have, I believe, two speaker request forms during the public comment period. The first one is from Mr. Rose, Tim Rose. Now, we do time this, so if you would watch the lights, and once it turns yellow, you'll have about 30 seconds. Tim, if you would please introduce yourself.
My name is Tim Rose, and I was wondering if there could be a redo the, some of the ward, yeah, the ward lines or something like that, or precinct lines and stuff like that, and pulling place that more of the, like, local homes or some that kind of involve the Native Americans and stuff, and that's what I wanted to bring up is to kind of bring that forward and stuff, so, thanks.
Thank you, Tim. We also have a speaker request form from Kathy Calhoun. Good evening, Kathy.
Hi.
And if you please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours.
My name's Kathy Calhoun, and I'm here with Scenic Rapid City, and I just wanted to share with you that we want to thank you for supporting the citizens' right to bring forth initiated measures. Scenic Rapid City has tried to be fair and run a clean campaign by giving citizens the facts. Basically, we've said that we don't want any more electronic digital signs, and we want less billboards in the city. We think that the way to do this is by increasing the spacing from 500 to 2,000 feet, and we hope with the rest of the citizens, along with you all as the citizens' representatives, will vote yes with us tomorrow on those two initiated measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, I have no further speaker request forms during the public comment period. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to any issue not on the agenda? Not, we will move on. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the non-public hearing items. These are items three through 94 inclusive, three through 94 inclusive. Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items three through 85 inclusive, please.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes. We do have a number of speaker request forms. Let's see, the first one is from a, this is, is it Telkamp, item number 52? Item number 52, everyone. And is it Mrs. Telkamp? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. If you just please identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Ethel Telkamp, and I just want, I'm here to thank you for supporting our billboard measures, and hope you'll continue to vote yes. I want to bring to your attention this flyer that was illegally put in my mailbox by Lamar Signs. I find it, found it on Monday morning, and there's no address or postage stamps on it. And I hope you'll, thank you for our billboard measure vote.
Thank you, Ethel. We also have a speaker request form on number 52 from Lisa Modric. Good evening, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's nice to see you all again. I'm going to miss you if this goes away.
If you please, if you please just identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours, Lisa.
Lisa Modric, and currently President of Scenic Rapid City Committee, Inc. It looks like we've got a couple of issues again, once again before you on the city council regarding billboards, off-premise billboards, digital billboards, sizing, spacing, and lighting. And we thank you for coming this far. We've all come a long way. I've been before you now for almost two years. It's amazing how time flies when we're having fun. We've gotten this far because the citizens of Rapid City have reached out to you, and they've reached out to each other and said, "Let's do something different. Let's make a difference," and what can we do? We've got the two initiatives now on the floor, and we are excited about the measures to go to vote tomorrow. However those measures turn out, we've got item 52, and 52 says, "We're going to take a look at ourselves. We're going to take a look at our own digital lighting, spacing, and sizing." I was at the Legal and Finance meeting last week, and I absolutely commend Dave Davis for standing up and saying, "Enough is enough," that's something that the citizens have been saying now for quite some time, and we applaud you for that, because enough is enough. We need to get down to business, and we need to make a difference, we need to make a change, and if that means retro, maybe we need to do that. I love that suggestion. It was a good motion. I'd like to see it get stronger. I think it's going to build. So from this painful, from this point forward, we foresee many things from today forward, because we can't look at yesterday. Yesterday happened. It happened a decade ago, two decades ago. In some founding fathers, I've been hearing 30 to 40 years, they've been looking for measures and ways to make a difference. Here we are today. We continue to come forward, and we feel very positive about where we're going to go today. Possibly reviewing city side might be a great step, along with the initiatives, with a vote yes. So today, or at the moment, I'm speaking on item 52. Go forward, bring some of this forward. We need more information. Ron had stated that. We absolutely believe that. We need more as a public. We all need this as citizens. We need this as committees to get more information, to make movement, to make change. All of you here have been representing for a very long time on many different committees, and we've seen and researched and found that there are issues that need to be changed. And again, I applaud you for that. I absolutely thank you for that. So I'm trying to stay focused on 52, because I just understand we've also got 93. I'll be back. Thank you.
Matter of fact, I do have a speaker request form for item number 93 from Lisa. Let's see here, let's see, item number 52, Deborah Jensen.[1387.54][1387.54](Laughter) Good evening, Deb. And there, if you just, there again, please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Hanks, and also members of the city council. My name is Deborah Jensen. My husband, Jack, and I own Black Hills Bagels and Black Hills Bagels Espresso in Rapid City. I'm also a member of Scenic Rapid City. We began as a small group of citizens and businesspeople who were concerned about variances that allow oversized billboards in prohibited areas and loopholes that allow conversions from static to flashing and dancing billboards with no say from the traveling public. Just last night, the billboard companies announced in a television forum that they will install 23 new digital billboards in Rapid City, and they are big companies, and they are used to getting what they want, as evident in item 52. Week after week, they come before the city with threats of lawsuits and charges of unfair competition against them, an oligopoly. These are simply red herrings to deflect the issue. Margaret Mead once said, "Never doubt a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens that can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Well, we're thoughtful, and we're committed, but we are not a small group. 4,000 citizens signed petitions to say 400 billboards in Rapid City is enough, and I would like to thank you, Mayor Hanks, for publicly stating your support and your decision to vote yes to limit billboards. And although some on the council have declined to say publicly where you stand on the issue, I believe that when you walk into that voting booth tomorrow and you give thoughtful consideration for what is best for Rapid City and for its citizens, that you also will check yes to limit billboards. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. I have no further speaker request forms. We're on items three through 85 inclusive. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak to any item three through 85 inclusive? If not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items three through 85 inclusive. Did you wish to speak?
I would like to.
Okay. Is there any objection, since we didn't take a vote? Any objection? Yeah, very good. Jim, why don't you go ahead and come forward, identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, sir.
Jim Peterson, Chair of Scenic Rapid City. I want to speak, I was going to speak about 54, but 93A brings up even a more interesting point, and that is this, that we need to have confidence in the people that we sit upon this dial, that we vote to be up there. A number of weeks ago, the Epic Company put a, an agenda item on legal and finance five minutes before the meeting started, requesting that the city get a declaratory judgment against our initiatives. The city, the city attorney wasn't even informed of that until five minutes before the meeting started. This issue with the ad hoc task force, obviously, we're extremely interested in that, and so we've been paying attention. We've been looking at the agenda, the posted agenda on the website, day after day, to see what's going to go on tonight, and minutes before, minutes before the meeting starts, this agenda item is added on to the agenda. I mean, what is that all about? You know that this is a critical issue at this time. Tomorrow, we're going to vote on these initiatives. People are interested in the task force results, billboard initiatives, and everything goes on about it. If you put anything on the initiative, I mean, on the agenda, it should be the things that are involved with billboards. And that seems like a no-brainer to me. It seems very disingenuous that we come here, have to come, cover the meeting just to make sure that things we're interested in are not, are going to be covered, or not going to be covered, as the case may be. I mean, that's the whole point of us going to the website. So, you know, I'm just real sort of disgruntled with that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? There again, we're taking public comment on items three through 85, three through 85. Any additional comments? Now the chair would look for a motion. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is that correct, Charlene?
No.
Yeah, just one more time. Can we have a motion and a second to close the public comment period? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public comment period. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes. We're on to the consent calendar. These are items three through 80 inclusive, three through 80 inclusive, and I would ask if any of these items need to be pulled from the consent calendar. If so, please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman, Gary Brown. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number 16, please. Number 16, very good. Any additional items? Additional items? Not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, item three through 80 inclusive, with the exception of item number 16.
So moved.
We have a motion. Charlene, did you get the second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? And this is the consent calendar, items three through 80 inclusive, with the exception of 16. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes. Item number 16, Deb, would you please read that in? Deb Haddock is the Chair of our Legal and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 16 is Minimart Incorporated, DBA Minimart, number 447, 1601 North Haynes Avenue, for a packaged off-sale malt beverage license, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on the motion? I believe Mr. Brown is going to abstain. Can you please state the reason for that?
Yes, I need to abstain. Abstain because I own the building, they lease it from me, so I'll be getting revenue.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion passes, with Mr. Brown abstaining. Opposed, the motion passes with Mr. Brown abstaining. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We're on to the continued consent items, items 81 through 85 inclusive. And the chair would ask if any of these items, 81 through 85, need to be pulled from the continued consent calendar. Where'd Mr. Limbaugh go? Are we good?
We are good. Nothing is to be pulled, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. How about from the council? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued consent items, items 81 through 85, per the recommendations on the agenda. We have a motion and a second. These are items 81 through 85, and the motion is to actually continue all five items to the, it looks like the June 20th, City Council meeting. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the, takes us on to the non-consent items, items 86 through 94, everyone. Items 86 through 94. The chair would look for a motion to open the public comment period on items 86 through 94 inclusive, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We do have one speaker request form, item number 93A from Lisa Modric. And this is 93A, and that motion was a report from the Ad Hoc Sign Task Force and recommendations. Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Lisa Modric. This hat tonight is now with the task force. Been on two task forces, task force number one, task force number two. I hate to even think about the hours I've got involved in this one, but it's been worth it. Worth it to my community. It's worth it to help you, which helps me understand where our signs are. 93A, I'm going to be honest with you. Every single one of us, at least on the citizen's side, had double-checked, triple-checked in the last three days. Are we on agenda? Should we be at the meeting? Where are we at? Do we need to be here? And it was not on agenda item. And I did see that other things on Wednesday made it to agenda, but our task force did not. Hmm. There's one other representative here, Lamar, and there's myself, when I know every single task force member was interested in being here tonight, if this was the night. We have watched rapidcitygov.org. We have called and said, "Are we on?" Because this is, a lot went into this task force. There was 18 meetings, two hours plus per meeting, at least, public meetings, a lot of research, each taking their own research by the horn and trying to figure this out, because we wanted to make sure that when it was presented, it was presented to you fairly, no matter how the vote came out. And I do believe that my fellow task force members that are not here tonight are going to be mad, because they were expecting, if it was on agenda, to be here, because we need to support this. We have worked hard, whether we're in favor of every single suggestion that's going to come before you, or we're only in favor of a few. I'm just about in shock that 93A came about without every single task force member being formed, that yes, it didn't make it on the agenda, but we're still going to put it on there. And although last Wednesday, we were told there was a good chance it was going to be on there, we've kept an eye on this agenda. And I know other items made it, because I went right from task force to legal and finance, and that item made it on here. So where is our sign task force item on this agenda? I'm quite upset that this is the kind of representation that we're going to have, is with two people, one, the big billboard companies, and the small independent citizen of Rapid City standing before you to listen to what your recommendation is going to be. There's not much there for questions, for answers, or where it's going to go next. So I'm going to speak on my behalf, now that I'm read that I disagree with 93A.
Thank you. We have no further speaker request forms. Does anyone else wish to speak on any items 86 through 94, 86 through 94 inclusive? If not, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items 86 through 94 inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. We are on to item number 86. Deb, would you please read that in?
Number 86 is a first reading ordinance number 5720 regarding supplemental appropriation number five for 2011. I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Item number 86. This is first reading of ordinance number 5720. Seeing no lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Item number 87, please.
87 is a request by Brian Vulcan for Ian and Amanda Vinaha for a preliminary plat located at 8885 Nemo Road, and I move approval with stips.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the record to reflect that I'll be abstaining from voting, as one of the applicants is an owner of the business I work for.
Very good. We'll make sure that's reflected. Any other discussion on this motion? We're dealing with item number 87, which is a preliminary plat, and the motion on the floor is approval with stipulations. Seeing no further lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes with Alderman Aaron Costello abstaining. Item number 88, please.
88 is a request by Centerline for Flump and Lump LLC for, is it a layout flat or a layout plat? Just kidding. Layout plat located north of intersection of Founders Park Drive and Philadelphia Street. I move approval with stips.
Flump and Lump. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval of number 88, which is a layout plat. The motion on the floor is approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I'm, I need some help here. Is this item related to another one further down on the agenda?
Let's go to Vicki Fisher.
I did not write.
Vicki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is an accessory item to item number 99. The layout plat is to create one lot, and item number 99 is an amendment to our major street plan to eliminate a collector's street that traverses through this property.
Okay, to eliminate a street? Is that what it said?
Correct.
Okay, because I know there was a comment from a resident there objecting to the plan. So I just wanted to point that out, that there's two related items with this.
Very good. Vicki?
Mr. Mayor, that comment actually goes to item 228, which is a rezone of this property from Park Forest to medium-density residential. And in that, I think there was some concern about trafficking through the area and how would it impact them. Mr. Telestis did contact that property owner directly, and the property owner indicated concurrence. This is in a planned development designation as well, so we'll see specific plans before that multifamily development comes forward.
Very good. Bonnie, anything else? Thank you. Mr. Telestis. Now typically, we don't take questions or anything. Did you have?
Just, just.
Do you need to clarify?
To make sure everybody understands, I attempted to contact her. I left messages, but, oh, did she? Okay. I didn't want to give the impression that we reached.
You tried, Pat.
I didn't want to give the impression that we reached.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. The motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. We're dealing with item number 88, and I should have asked you why you're up here, Pat, what flump and lump stands for, but I won't embarrass you. Okay, the motion, the motion on the floor is for approval of stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Item number 89, please.
89 is a request from Divas and Rockstars for a video lottery license, and I yield the floor.
Okay. Look, I tell you what. Let's go to Pauline or Jason Green, and they, I believe, can give us an update as far as available licenses that the City Council, if they chose to, could put out for lottery, and also the adopted procedure that the council has adopted as far as dispensing any additional licenses. Pauline, did you want to handle that?
I can do that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. According to the ordinance that we have adopted currently with our population, we are allowed 80 video lottery license locations. At this time, we have 69 that have been issued. The second meeting in July is when I typically do that update, and you guys decide at that time if you will release any licenses or not. This request is coming forward ahead of that time. According to the resolution that was adopted in 1995, if you do choose to open up video lottery licenses, they will, there is a lottery process for that. There is a copy of the resolution in your packets, I believe. Their application requirements would be a $250 non-refundable application fee, and they pay that at the time of application. And we have the, we would have the forms here at City Hall in the Finance Office. Applicant must be 21 years of age, only one application per location, and then obviously, the application has to be submitted before deadline. So if this is something that the council chooses to do, we do have to publish at least 15 days prior to the date of the drawing that we would be opening licenses up. So that way, it would give them opportunity to apply for the license.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reference to this location specifically, I, at one time, there was a video lottery license in this establishment. I guess that would be pointed to Mr. Green or?
Let's go to, I'm not sure. I believe you're correct, Mr. Wyffenbach. We'd, Pauline?
Yes, sir. That is correct. They used to have a video lottery license there, but they must have transferred it to a different location at one time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can we have a motion on the floor, please? We do not have a motion. Motion to acknowledge, motion to legal and finance. Let's see. Mr. Wyffen, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to take this to legal and finance, but with the preparation of all the criteria and facts that are involved in this particular situation. So it would be maybe 30 days or whatever would give our city attorney time to get all that information available.
So my understanding, the motion, the motion is strictly to place this item for discussion on legal and finance.
Yeah, obviously, we have to, we would have to open up to look at if the city of Rapid City wanted to
Right.
have any other video licenses or the facts.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Could we have an additional motion, please? Possibly to acknowledge or?
Yes, acknowledge your report.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Item number 90, please. Deb, if you please read that in.
Number 90 is amend the 2012 project schedule to advance the senior needs assessment funding of $33,625 to 2011 from 2013 to allow the RFP to be prepared, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, dealing with item number 90, which is to amend the 2012 project schedule. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief explanation. As we all know, during the last round of 2012, there was a proposal brought forward for a senior center. Some of the discussion came into play as far as the two existing senior centers, and whether it was a productive move to go in the direction. I have to commend the senior community in Rapid. They came together under the guidance of Sandy Deagle, and the senior collaborative group studied the issues, realized that the direction that they were heading was not the correct direction, and in fact, took a step backwards and said, "Free that money up and move it forward in another project, and we'll look forward to the next round." But in the same time, we understand we don't know everything we need to know, and we need to do some additional surveys. That is where this needs assessment comes into play. There is a great need to answer a lot of questions as to exactly what our needs are, what the desires of the senior community citywide is, and the $33,625 has been allocated, but it was allocated in 2013. We'd like to see it moved to the 2011 fiscal year, so that we can go forward and get that survey taken right away, and be able to have those, that information available to put together the plans for the next round. And I think Sandy Deagle is here in case there's questions that are far beyond what I've explained. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Charlene, we do have a motion on the floor, correct? Okay, we have a motion, second for approval. Discussion on the floor. Any further discussion? We are dealing with item number 90. Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to the bids. Item number 91. Pauline, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item for, to award the bid is for the Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant. I'm going to try and zoom this in just a little bit. We did receive five bids on this. The engineer's estimate remained at $26,130,000. The recommendation is to award the total bid in the amount of $19,734,000 to Malt Construction, Inc.
We have a motion and a second to award the bids to Malt Construction, Inc., for a grand total of $19,734,000. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Pauline, can you identify, if you have the number available, what this represents in terms of the savings over the previous bid?
I apologize. I do not have the last numbers in front of me, no. I do know that it was over 20 million. Mr. Tech, perhaps you could assist in that?
Mr. Tech?
The previous low bid that was opened was $20,273,000, so it's nearly $500,000 less than the previous bid opening.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Thank you. Does this include all the alternates that we had in the last bids, Dale?
Dale, that's a yes. Okay, Deb, you still have the floor, ma'am.
This is not including the $65,000 we had to pay extra for to rebid and some other stuff, right? This is just the new bid.
That's correct. There's addition $55,000 in consultant fees to rebid the project.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know a lot of thought went into this, and it was a good, it was a hard decision, but it was a good decision to rebid this project. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Ellis for, originally, when they wanted to rebid this project, they were talking about $85,000. He pushed them a little bit and said, "You need to lower that number." Got it down to $55,000. I think we're saving almost $500,000. So if you subtract the 55 for the rebid of the project, I think that the city made the right decision on this project. And, but, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Ellis in regards to the contractor on this project.
You mean, Mr. Tech? Mr. Ellis isn't here this evening.
Oh, okay. All right. Too much sunshine today. But, so I guess, Mr. Tech, the question is, have you guys had an opportunity to look over the credentials and the qualifications of this contractor?
Mr. Tech?
Yes, Mr. Wyffenbach, we have, on, I believe, May 25th, six days prior to the bid opening, the contractor received notification that they were qualified. So, yes, they submitted their information well ahead of the bid opening and were deemed to be qualified. In addition to that, our consultant, Brunson-McDonald Engineering out of Colorado, has worked with this contractor on other projects and believes they are a quality contractor.
That would be my understanding, is that they've done a project fairly similar to this. So, this was a new bidder also. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to award the bid to Malt Construction, Inc., for a grand total of $19,734,000. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the motion passes.
Next item to award the bid on is the East Anamosa Street project from North Lacrosse to Century Road. We received four bids on this project. The engineer's estimate was $8,987,401.42. The recommendation is to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation's award of the total bid in the amount of $7,193,593.65 to Upper Plains Contracting, Inc.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to award to Upper Plains Contracting, Inc., for a grand total of $7,193,593.65. Any discussion on that motion? Good bid, almost $2 million under. State should be happy. Seeing no further lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to items from the mayor. We do have one item from the mayor, and that is a Goal One update. And the chairman for the Goal One is Jeff Karzrude. And this is, of course, all part of the 2020 strategic vision. Mr. Karzrude, and they should be bringing up your PowerPoint here shortly. Mr. Carsrude, and they should be bringing up your PowerPoint here shortly.
As stated, I'm Jeff Carsrude, chairman of the, of the goals twenty-twenty, we're not, it's the Vision Twenty-Twenty Goals Number One Committee. There's, there's five, there's five goals that are going, that were stated. This goes back from a, a, a group of people from the, from the community, a large group of people from the community who decided that these are the things that we need to look at to create a strategic plan. Well, number one is jobs, in, in, in a focus that a little bit closer, primary jobs. Nope. That's fine, yeah, okay. Let me restate the goal real quick. By twenty-twenty, Rapid City will be recognized as a leader in attracting, expanding, and retaining diverse businesses that offer higher skilled and higher total compensation employment opportunities. This will be evidenced by the growth that exceeds the national standards. Upon the board there is a, is, are the members of our task force of our committee, and we've been working since about, oh, say, November of last year. Met on a normal base, or on a, on a regular basis, but about two to three months ago, we have suspended our meetings because we've got a feasibility study, and Ben's going to touch on that right, in a little bit, but we've, we've started a feasibility study, and this is a group that's going to take a look at it. We got to that point where we were focusing on, on, on clusters. We had, we had focused clusters of, of about six that we were narrowing down to, and we realized, you know what? We need to get a full picture, plus we've got a lot of energy needs, a lot of oil and gas, and then south of us, we have some, some other things going on, so we thought we'd get, we better make sure that we get a, a good solid look at this from the outside. So that's what's going on right now. Who, who are we? As you, as you saw on, on the screen there, it's, it's a very diverse group of, of people. Economic development is, is, is a combination of the three entities you see, see right there. You've got business, government, and education leaders. There's, there's a, a good share of us who are on that committee are also on economic development, and I think that's a good idea because, because as, as vice chair of the economic development and Ben is president of economic development, we get focused on what we're doing, but don't always look, you know, get, get an outside look in, so I think this is a great exercise. We are finding that a lot of the things that we were focusing on are the things that we probably will continue to, but we're also finding some new things too, especially with the, say, the oil and gas. As stated, goal number one, our focus is attracting quality jobs and a little clearer primary jobs so that we can have an economic engine for, for the year-round, not just, not just the summer months like we've typically seen. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Ben Snow. He's a member of our task force and also the president of Rapid City Economic Development.
Well, Mayor and Council, this, of course, is what the Economic Development Partnership does, but here, I'm kind of wearing two hats. One is a committee member for this group that's doing outreach into the community, but because this type of work is really what our organization is tasked with doing, I'll switch gears and kind of wear my president of the EDP hat for just a minute to kind of provide a little bit of context as to, as to what's at stake in this whole exercise of focusing on jobs and, and primary jobs. If you take a few steps back and look at the Black Hills community, Rapid City, of course, is the economic anchor and center of the Black Hills economy, and there's really three hallmarks that makes our regional economy tick, and this won't, won't come as a surprise to many people here. But the first is that we live in a very stable environment, and I'll show you a few slides to, to prove that out, and that we're in a part of the country that tends to not have the highs as high and not the lows as low as what happens in a lot of other parts in, in the country, so we're not as volatile. If you take a look at these next few slides, this gives a little peek into what's happened during this latest recession. This goes back into January of 'oh-seven. This is a national map broken down by county, and the light-colored areas are those counties which are experiencing the lowest unemployment rates, and the dark counties are those that are experiencing the highest levels of unemployment. I'm going to fast-forward this slide. You can see the source at the top there, if any of you just didn't see in about a forty-five second video that, where this thing comes to life on YouTube. But if you fast-forward about eighteen months, you can see this bleeding that was happening mostly from the Midwest and from either coast in terms of just this one metric, which is the unemployment rate. Go out about another year and you can see it's getting pretty bad, but look where our, our spot is. Well, most people should be able to identify where the Black Hills is on this map, but you, you can see, besides the Indian Reservation areas, the rest of the state largely has been unaffected by the recession. And then this goes back to last fall, which is the last, last slide I have, and you can see there's just this little heartland of America where these three or four states have been largely recession-resistant as compared to the rest of the country. So that's one of the hallmarks of our local economy. The second is the fact that we have a very strong seasonal economy. And I'll give you a couple of slides as an example. Here, many of you have seen this, the Campbell slide. This is the sales tax receipts from the city of Rapid City for a ten-year period dating from two thousand to two thousand and nine, and you can see there's about a thirty to forty percent increase in sales tax revenue during those summer months, which, which is evident here, looking at those average. Well, what we're focused on is really not that hump and not the Christmas push with all of the retail activity, but rather those two trough points. What can we do to lift those, those levels up? And we'll get those, the hump and the, the Christmas sales will, will come with it and come upward as well. So that's our focus, both with this task force as well as the Economic Development Partnership, is how do we address the year-round situation of our economy? And then here's just a fun little slide to talk about the fact that we're not here to replace tourism. What we're seeking is to diversify the economy so that we can have a little bit better balance on, on how our, our economy does on a year-round basis. And then here's the third, and this is something that's maybe a little bit of a sore spot for some people, but the, the numbers do not lie, and that is that our wages in this part of the country are relatively low when compared to a lot, a lot of other markets. That's a, that's a challenge for us. How do we deal with that? How do we try to get some upward pressure on wages? Well, we think the best way to do that is to diversify the economy into other industries that pay higher wages that will sort of have that lifting tide effect. And here's just a graphic to indicate where we're at. In the right-hand column, you see average household incomes, and they're going out. We have the Rapid City area, the MSA, and then fifty-hundred and two-hundred-mile radial rings outside of downtown, and you can see it's, Rapid City is still the leader within the Black Hills, but, but those numbers aren't that great because what you have is an average household number, and so to derive a forty-six thousand a year household income, you're typically looking at two or two and a half wage earners getting to that number. So if you look at the very bottom, that, that thirty-three is, is the, would be a per-capita number, which I'll refer to that just, just a little bit later. Okay, so here's the question, here's the task we have, which is, what do we do to grow higher wage industries and employment in this part of the country? And some things that's been done over the last few years that which, which I think are good steps in the right direction. And the first was about five years ago, Black Hills Vision hired a consultancy group. Many of you are familiar with this Batel report that came out a few years ago, and the Batel report talks about the concept of creating a technology corridor, changing the brand or the face of the Black Hills to have it emulate what would happen if, for example, the National Lab gets, gets taken over by the Department of Energy and this thing blossoms, and over the next twenty to fifty years, is this something that can happen here in the Black Hills, which is a smattering of these technology-based companies centered around two key assets, the underground lab as well as the South Dakota School of Mines and Technology. And so this is, helps people to kind of envision what this might look like if this area was known for something other than just, just tourism, for example. And so last time I spoke before this body, I shared this slide, which is basically an inventory, an asset inventory. What do we got? And we got a lot of really good things going here. We've got a lot of assets that we can leverage to start to grow a more well-rounded, year-round economy, and there's, there's just a few of them there. What you're going to take a look at tonight is the first sneak peek into some of the data that has been revealed from a consultant group that we've gotten together with, and so you're the first group to take a look at this. It's a group known as Innovation Economics, and in concert with the Economic Development Partnership and matching funds from Black Hills Vision, we have started the process of, of gathering the data to tell us what some of these strengths are and which markets do we compete against. What are our peer markets and how are they performing in wage growth as compared to the Rapid City and the Black Hills area? The primary geographic area is the Rapid City MSA, which is essentially Henneton and Meade County put together. And the larger trade area is going to be this, this large two-hundred-mile ring that's going to include parts of five states and fifty-five different counties. So the data that I'm going to share with you here on these next couple of slides is really just an MSA to MSA comparison, because we haven't gone and gathered all the information from the fifty-five county zone yet. This is a five, well, now we are about six-year look back at where each of these markets were. You can see some of these peer markets in the left-hand column, there's twelve inclusive of Rapid City, and you'll see the population numbers there and what the median annual wages were back in 'oh-five, and then what the two-thousand-and-nine version of those same numbers is, and then you can see the percentage of wage growth in the far right-hand column. And we, we've not done bad, growing at fourteen percent over that period, but take a look at some of those leading markets, the top five on that list, and what you see is that they're starting to build a bigger gap between where we are, where we were five years ago and where we are today, in that, and that's a gap we don't want to see widening for obvious reasons, and I'll, I'll show you the economic impact of that lost, those lost wages. This is a look that compares from a different source than that last graph or that last chart, and yet we're seeing the similar trend here. The Black Hills region is underperforming when it comes to wage growth as compared to, in this case, there's seven other markets that, that, or there's eight others that we're comparing against, and we're, we're not the top of the food chain here, so that's an area of opportunity for us to, to change that. Here's the opportunity cost by not focusing on higher wages in Rapid City and the Black Hills. If you were to take a look at where we are, and if we were to fill that gap to come up to the average of those leading markets and convert that into, if we had our pro-rata share of the same type of high wages as those other markets have, we would have generated on an annual basis in the Rapid City area over two-hundred million dollars in annual payroll. That's what we would have generated. In the larger Black Hills area, about two-hundred-and-fifty-one million dollars. So there's a lot at stake here, and, and that's why we're excited about the opportunity to, to really start focusing on higher wages. I'll give you just a few examples in what is driving the wage growth in some of these other leading peer regions for us. And if we take a little deeper look into some of these industries, for example, financing, insurance, business services, and healthcare are just three that I've, I've plucked out as examples. Okay, this chart indicates the, the NAICS code, the industry classification, in all of these various markets compared side by side. The additional average jobs column are the jobs that if Rapid City was performing at the same level as those communities on the far right-hand column, those are the number of additional jobs we would have the capacity to handle for us to be on par with, with those other markets. And you can see the EPW is the earnings per worker number, and then that's translated into the potential earnings impact if we were to focus on just some of those particular industry and try to match what some of the leading peer regions are doing in the same area. This is the same exercise, but this is for business services. Again, you can see the, the dramatic impact of going after some of these types of industries. And then finally, here is the healthcare industry. So as we go forward, there's, oh, there's one other thing we did look at, and that is the capacity to innovate, because the capacity to innovate is a good driver for higher wages down the road. If you look at some innovation rankings, there's three things you can look at. You can look at the number of patents issued in these different markets. You can look at the National Institutes of Health funding that's flowing into those markets, and you can look at venture capital funding that's flowing into those other markets. And then you, you provide a score, and you can see that innovation index. Rapid City is just a, just a smidge above Flagstaff, Arizona, and I think we could do better. I think we can do what some of those, those leaders kind of in that, in that second group So what's next for us? We're just in the early stages of gathering this research. There's going to be more information that comes out. We're going to drive a little bit deeper into specific industries with, that some of these other markets are experiencing success in, and determine which ones the, the Rapid City and Black Hills area has a legitimate claim to, to go after. And then we will be identifying target industry clusters. We'll have a series of outreach meetings to, to lots of different groups. It was the city council, be the county commissioners, of course, all of our stakeholders with the Economic Development Partnership, the, the goals task force over the course of, of the summer, Chamber of Commerce, Black Hills Vision, and lots of other industry leaders throughout the Black Hills, so that we can get buy-in to this plan. By the time we're done with this plan, we will have identified several industry clusters that we're going to go after, and we'll have a custom-tailored strategic plan on how to grow those particular industries, and we'll do that per industry, because each one of them is a little different as how we would go after it. So if we just take a step back again and look at where we've come from and where the opportunities are, you can look at this area as having experienced economic eras in our history, and these can be cumulative. So when we ushered in the tourism era, for example, we've, we're still in that era. We still have a lot of, of, of opportunity in that area. The gold mining era, I think that one's kind of done. When Ellsworth came here and created all, all the jobs, when they came here as the Army Air Base back after, after, actually during World War Two, and since then, that's a huge part of our economy, but we can still do more. We can still diversify from, from that. And so that two thousand and ten and beyond is, really the sky's the limit on how we can create these other pillars that can support our economy. When one or more goes down, we're not, we're not fearful of what's going to happen of the future because we'll have that diversity. And as Jeff said, this is about developing a year-round system of revenue and money flow throughout the economy, so that's, that's what this is all about. Thank you for listening. If you have any questions, Jeff and I are here to entertain them.
And also probably need to mention the fact that we're still developing that, the baseline document, the, the, to see where we're at and how we compare. We're still working on that, too.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If so, please turn any light. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much as a question as just a comment, I just want to commend both Ben and Mr. Carsrude of, of actually bringing forth and talking about the wage structure in the city. Something for my age demographic, but I watch some of the bright minds of our city leave en masse every year because we can't compete competitively on a national scale, and we are losing some of the finest talent that I've ever seen. And I, I commend you for taking on that task, and I hope that we as a city can also take on that challenge to keep them here at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a whole host of questions, but I'm not going to go into them tonight, but will you make this available to us? This presentation, so we can?
I, I will. It's not quite ready for, for public consumption as far as the printed version, but it will be shortly.
We're testing it, we're testing it with you, but we've got some, we've got a plan.
I can help you test it, because I've got a lot of questions.
We, we've got a, we've, we've got a planned way that we're going to bring this out, and we weren't quite ready, but we did want to give you a taste, so, so I guess when we're...
We will absolutely, let, let me answer the Alderman's question in this way. When this is done, when, when we have this ready for publication, the idea is that this is an open document. It's going to be published everywhere. We want everybody to see what's at stake here, what the opportunities are, and we want to get the buy-in from everybody. So we want to make sure that the timing is correct so that the, as the data gets, gets released, it's correct and sourceable and that everybody's on the same page and that there's, aren't...
I understand, but if you want my input, it would be easier for me to have that information. I can't quite recall everything that was on there since it was the first time I've seen it, so.
Oh, okay. No, you can copy.
I'm sure constructive input would be appreciated.
And the full report's going to come out in about three months.
Thanks.
Yep.
Very good. Further discussion? Mr. Mason, do you have something else? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have one additional question. Will you also be including some policy recommendations? Any ideas on new ways to incentivize and from our aspect?
Yes, I think there, you know, any economic development plan, whether it's coming from our organization or whether it's citywide or countywide, Black Hills-wide, absolutely. What you want to do is you want to incentivize the right types of employers, the right types of employment. And this will just give us a lot more, a lot more intelligence really to operate with with a plan that's a little more structured to deliver these types of results.
And you understand that we've got to do it a lot smarter because we've got other communities that have a lot of empty buildings and a lot of workers that are ready to go. So we've got to be a lot smarter with less assets.
Appreciate that. Part of the reason I asked, I've had the opportunity to, been traveling a bit to other states, and I've noticed there's a lot of communities looking at new ways of incentivizing through different policies. And I would absolutely look forward to that challenge from you guys to us on different ways of creating policies to incentivize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to acknowledge, please? Okay, we have a motion. Have you got a second? I think Gary was, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion. Thank you, Jimon. I know how hard you guys have been working at this, and we truly appreciate it.
And good luck to all you all tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is 93A, and we're going to go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a presentation to label, I do have a presentation to make, but first I'd like to share a few words based on the public comment. The legal and finance and public works items are placed on this agenda independent of any committee or task force. The responsibility of placing this item on the agenda was mine and mine alone, and unfortunately, the agenda was published before I took the time to notify anyone to add it. So item 93A is not part of some conspiracy to hide or protect or whatever someone may imagine. It is purely the result of me neglecting to notify the proper people at the right time. And for those aspects, I deserve and accept your criticism. However, at the meeting, I did indicate I plan on adding this to the agenda. And while evidently there were some phone calls amongst task force members about it being on the agenda, no one contacted me. And so, except Ms. Peterson, she did call this afternoon. So in the future, if you find yourself in a situation similar to this, I suggest you contact the chair of your task force or committee, for they are the ones responsible. Now, if I may, I'd like to go to the podium and present the recommendations.
Roy, can you bring that up, please? You got a good one, friend?
Soon to follow are the committee recommendations from the Ad Hoc Sign Code Division Task Force. The task force members, as was appointed by the council and the mayor, were Doug Rumpke, Lisa Modric, Rod Pettigrew, Andy Ainsley, Gene Hunter, Eric Farrar, Dan Hop, Dennis Hedich, Barry Hort, who served as vice chair, Mark Kirkaby, Cody Champion, Pat Hamilton, and two liaisons, Jordan Mason and myself, who served as chair. There were members of staff who were essential to this process, and they are Brad Salon, Jean Nicholson, Joel Landine, Andy Chlebek, and Barb Garcia. Without them, this would have been downright impossible. This task force was directed by the council, appointed by the mayor, with one additional appointment by the council. We met 18 times in all. There was a field trip to review signage in the city. We held two public meetings focused solely on taking comments, and we also hosted a representative from Daktronics to give us their perspective. Now on to the committee recommendations. The first recommendation is to preserve the existing sign credit system. Now, please note the date of this vote. It's February 9th, 2011, and that vote was 10 to 1. The second recommendation be that motion is prohibited on all off-premise, on-premise, and public-purpose signs within the city. This includes prohibiting full motion on all current signs, so no grandfathering in motion. As you can see, that was a 7 to 3 vote. And at this point, I'll add, if you want clarification on who voted for what, all the minutes are available on the city website. If you do a search for Ad Hoc Sign Code Division Task Force, it will come up. The third recommendation is that additional electronic digital off-premise signs be allowed. I think I left out the word "no" in there. No additional electronic digital off-premise signs be allowed. Task Force LLC recommends that on-premise electronic signs be treated the same as off-premise signs. That was a 5 to 3 vote. Recommendation number four, if off-premise digital signs are allowed, the task force recommends four signed credits be required to convert a static billboard to a digital one. And I'm just going to ask you to please note the dates of the votes. The other recommendation number five is that display messages on both on-premise and off-premise signs be limited to a six-second static message with no animation. Scrolling messages would be allowed, but a definition of what constitutes a scrolling message should be added to the sign code. There was a lot of discussion on that one, and that ended up in a 6 to 5 vote, as you can see. The sixth recommendation is that the city adopt a non-subjective brightness standard for any electronic video signs, whether they be on or off premises. The standard that the task force recommends is .3-foot candles above ambient light, and that is the industry standard. And that information was provided to us via the presentation from Daktronics. The seventh recommendation is that all legal non-conforming signs have a maximum of 10 years to come into compliance with the sign code. The task force recommends that all legal non-conforming signs within the downtown historic district in the original town of Rapid City be excluded from this requirement. Recommendation eight, the task force recommends that city signage, such as the Civic Center sign, comply with the sign code. Recommendation nine, under political signs, and these are also highlighted more clearly or in their full grandeur, I'll say, in the memo from Joel Landine, Landine, is that political signs may not be displayed until 30 days prior to the election, and they be limited to 32 total square feet and a maximum height of eight feet. And then, yes, that was a, I apologize, I left out what the vote was on these. Now coming to the miscellaneous signs, there were a few, actually quite a few corrections or suggested changes to the miscellaneous signs, a few of which I've highlighted here. Some of them were just sort of wording corrections, so I haven't highlighted everything here. But this is a fairly significant one, and that is that banners, pendants, searchlights, streamers, twirling signs, sandwich board signs, sidewalk or curved signs, balloons, air and gas-filled figures shall be prohibited except when permitted pursuant to this section. It used to be they were permitted except when prohibited. Another recommendation of the miscellaneous signs is that a permit may be issued for pendants, sandwich boards, banners, and air and gas-filled figurines, not exceeding 15 feet in height, to the following. A business in conjunction with a grand opening, and that permit be limited to 15 days, and only one grand opening will be allowed per business, thus keeping people from having weekly grand openings and a permanent banner. To nonprofit civic or charitable or fraternal organizations in conjunction with a special event being held within Rapid City, and that permit would be issued for 30 days, not more than 30 days. And there were additional, Roy, go ahead, and, thanks. There were additional suggested changes under the miscellaneous as far as the sizes that are allowed. There was a recommendation that sandwich boards be allowed, one per business, in the original city of Rapid City. And there were also some added regulations on businesses that are in residential areas, just how exactly they can be signed. So at this point, my recommendation is that we as a council forward this to the legal and finance committee for consideration. And I'll go back to the dais, and I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take a couple of questions here. We have a light on from Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm not going to let Mr. Costello take the full brunt of having an agenda item put on the agenda. It would have been simple, and I apologize to the people in the audience for having to come up and explain their position. It would have been simple for us to tell you that we've been trying to get this information for some period of time. Mr. Costello, I appreciate you bringing it forward. I appreciate the Sign Code Task Force for spending their time. I just, I can't go without saying this because there is, there's a lot of things that come up on the agenda. Tonight, we've seen another presentation that I hadn't seen before. Sometimes it is a way to get a kickstart so we can get this information available to us. This is the first I've seen of any of the recommendations from the Sign Code Task Force, just as any of you out there. Unfortunately, it wasn't on the agenda. The other items we've seen earlier, it wasn't on the agenda either. There was no copy of it. It was an agenda item, but there was no copy of it. So I, again, I appreciate Mr. Costello's work. I'm not, I appreciate the task force work, and there's going to be a lot of work trying to decipher these, what is all involved in this, these recommendations and how they came about. So I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question concerning some of the recommendations and one that may be familiar between myself and Alderman Costello, but I was hoping you could possibly elaborate on the political signs and what you define as a political sign.
Mr. Costello.
Thank you. I appreciate the question, Alderman Mason. I don't feel it's my place exactly to define a political sign per this recommendation. I can offer you my personal opinion.
I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. To me, a political sign would be a sign saying, for instance, "Costello for Council." I would consider that a political sign. Any sign specific to an election topic, let's say. For instance, currently, the billboard initiatives. I would consider those political signs. That's all that pops into my head right now. I would, I would say a current political issue to me would be a political sign. But I'm no lawyer.
Mr. Mason.
Appreciate that, Mr. Costello. I guess one of the concerns I have with that particular recommendation is, as I'm looking here from the Salt Lake Tribune, that was actually published last month, recently, the state of Utah has been dealing with these same ordinances, and they passed very similar things limiting the timeframe that political signs could be brought up. And I, it was contested in court, and it has been a very contentious subject as far as First Amendment free speech issues. And it's something that I guess I would keep in mind as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my haste, I neglected to thank everyone for all their work. I mean, it was challenging for all of us. The majority of the task force members made all the meetings, and it was a learning experience for all of us, an incredible growth experience for myself. And I was impressed with the civility and the professionalism with which the task force members conducted themselves during debate. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Further discussion? We do not have a motion on the floor. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to take it to legal and finance, but I would also like, with that motion, to have the minutes of the task force attached to the recommendations. So when we, as we decipher through those and we have questions, we can write those questions down, so when we start this process, we can go at it methodically and try to understand how they came about those decisions. So that'd be my motion. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And the motion is to have an item placed on the next legal and finance committee and to make sure, we'll double-check. I believe that the links with all the minutes are actually already on the internet. Is that correct, Mr. Costello?
Yes, they are on the website, but I could see it being an advantage to put them all directly with the item.
What we'll do is, when the agenda comes forward, what we'll do is we'll make sure not only are the recommendations there, we'll also put the links, if that's all right, put all the links to all the minutes. Okay, everyone clear on the motion? Clear on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you for the discussion, everyone. We're on to staff items. Item number 94, which is a Vision 2012 update. Mr. Tech, you're filling your pitch hitting for Robert.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor. I have three updates I'd like to present tonight. Phase three projects, $400,000 for the Campbell Street reinforced concrete box culvert was committed. That was funds, as I said, $400,000 out of the $1.785 million project. That completes the commitment for that project. In addition, the Parkview tennis courtroom, or court restroom project, $50,000 commitment from 2012. Council action, I believe back in April, added that to the project. That's for the $250,000 total project, and that should be the total commitment for that as well. You also see a $9,909.85 commitment for the downtown renovation project. That was for railroad permitting, and that also completes the commitment for that phase three project. Down in phase four, there's a total of $135,482 shown for the Main Street Square project. Those are three change orders that have been approved by council. And as you can see, there's a $407,000 remaining balance for that project.
Okay, very good. Any discussion or questions? Now, the chair would look for motion to acknowledge or report.
Come on.
We have a motion, a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the public hearing items. These are items 95 through 228 inclusive. Everyone got that one? 95 through 228 inclusive. Chair would look for motion to open the public comment period on items 95 through 128 inclusive, please. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Just for point of clarification for everyone in the audience and also those watching on TV, items 100 through, let's look here, about 226 are actually liquor license renewals. So that's why there's so many items on this part of the agenda. Okay, we are on to the, and now, I have no, let's see, chair would open, let's see, did we open the public comment period? Okay, very good. I have no speaker request forms for this portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to any item, items 95 through 225 inclusive?
Mr. Mayor, I have filed an appeal in relation to item number 227. I assume that that will be appropriately raised at the time you come.
Nope. Actually, Mr. Rentsch, now would be your time to speak.
Very well.
And just so you know, sir, if they do have any questions during that, they can certainly ask them, but this would be your time to address the council.
Very well. Shall I come forward?
Please do, sir. Please come forward. If you would identify yourself for the record in the floor of yours, and if you just watch the lights, once it does turn yellow, you will have, I believe, approximately 30 seconds.
Where's the light located?
Right up in front.
Okay, thank you.
And we won't start until you're ready here, Mr. Rentsch.
Okay, fair enough. Now, I'm looking for a plug. Don't see one.
Vicky, we'll get you a squirt away there.
Oh, okay.
We'll just unplug me and you and how about that?
Thank you.
There you go.
My name is John, my name is John Reinsch. This concerns an abatement performed by the city at my home at 223 South Canyon Road. I appeared before the Finance Committee. Finance Committee members have received a copy of my written notice of appeal. Other members should have received a copy of that notice in your mailbox. If not, and if you want one for any reason, I'll be glad to get you a copy after this meeting. The issue here is failure of the city to provide notices required by the Constitution and ordinance. I was out of town. Both the ordinance officer involved and Mr. Nyberg, the Assistant City Attorney, knew that I was. Mr. Chlebek, the ordinance officer, had agreed explicitly to inform me by email of any notice or any business concerning me or my property. He failed to do so. He mailed, or claims that he mailed, a postcard notice, and I have, since my appearance before the Finance Committee, obtained from Mr. Chlebek what he represents as a copy of the notice that was mailed. It corresponds in every way with the description in my notice of appeal. My request to the council tonight is as follows. You have before you, in the notice of appeal and in the recording I'm about to play for you, evidence sufficient... you, evidence sufficient to sever this special assessment from the assessment rule. My request to you is that you do so. If any of you feel that you need more information, or that time is necessary for fact finding, then I request that you sever the special assessment of two hundred and seven dollars from the assessment rule and refer the matter to the finance committee for investigation. I'm going to play for you the recording of my telephone conversation made prior to the notice in which Mr. Chlebek promises me that he will inform me by email.
Mr. Rentsel, if you could grab that mic, maybe pull it down, that may help. There you go, thank you, sir.
Sure.
[inaudible] Yes, is this Mr. Chlebek? It is, what can I do?
This is John Reins. I learned today that in addition to cutting down the live tree and stealing my vehicle, you guys ran through the front yard with a machine of some kind and killed one of my crab apple trees. I need to know the date on which that yard work was done, and the date of the notice in relation to it.
Okay, I don't know anything about any crab apple tree being killed, but...
You will, you will be filled in, in due course.
Can I pull up the notice? Okay, the notice was sent seven twenty-one, with the due date of seven twenty-six.
Okay.
And the property was abated on eight twelve.
Very well, thank you for that information. Now, from what you've said the other day, that, uh, the, the city attorney would see that I was taken care of, I gather that copies of these notices have all gone to Mr. Nyberg, is that correct?
Um, I, I have all the copies here. I believe he is out of the office until Monday.
No, I understand, but just in general, you've sent copies of all of these notices to him, haven't you?
Um, he has some copies, he doesn't have the entire file.
No, but when, when, in the last, in the last little while, when you've issued a notice, you've sent a copy to him, is that correct?
Um, he has had some of those, yes.
Yeah, okay. Now, you understand that I'm not in Rapid City, and...
That was relayed to me, yeah.
And that because Mr. Nyberg was very well aware of that, had been in regular communication with me by email, what the city has done is not consistent with its responsibilities for giving notice, in my opinion. The reason that I mention that is, you have my email as well. If you have any business with me, or any business concerning my house, I believe you are under an obligation to inform me of that business by email, because you know you can communicate with me in that way. Regardless of whether you agree with me about the obligation, will you do so?
Um, that, I mean, I send notices to whatever the record of the owner's record shows at the county, I just send it to that address.
And would you...
The fact that Wade had your email address, he informed me of, after the fact, yes, he does have that.
And, and would you answer the question that I asked there? Will you please send, by the email that you have in your inbox, any notice or any business that you have with me, let me know by email about it?
Um, I can do that.
Good, thank you very kindly, bye.
Okay.
Thank you for my patience, I see that my time has expired. I direct the attention of the members of the council to the information in the notice of appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I have no further speaker request forms on any items, and we are dealing with items ninety-five through two twenty-eight. Is there any other discussion in the audience? Mr. Mason, did you want to talk about this item? I was going to say, we'll bring that up actually when we get to it on the agenda? Okay, very good. Okay, seeing no further speaker request forms, please keep in mind, we do leave the public comment period open during this part of the agenda. We're on to the continued public hearing consent items, items ninety-five through ninety-eight. And the chair would ask if any of these items need to be pulled from the consent calendar.
They do not.
Very good, thank you. How about from the city council? Seeing none. The chair would look for motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items ninety-five through ninety-eight, per the recommendations on the agenda. We have a motion and a second, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello. We're dealing with items ninety-five through ninety-eight.
Okay.
Okay. Thought I'd help you out there. Okay, and motion on the floor is for approval, the continued public hearing consent items, items ninety-five through ninety-eight. Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the continued public hearing items, consent items, we're at the point where we need to close the public hearing items, items ninety-five through two twenty-eight inclusive, so the chair would look for that motion.
No motion.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing item, our public comments for items ninety-five through two twenty-eight inclusive. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent public hearing items, these are items ninety-nine through two twenty-seven inclusive. Chair would ask if any items ninety-nine through two twenty-seven need to be pulled from the consent calendar? If so, please turn on your light. Dale, did you have one? Nope. Okay. Okay, two twenty-seven. Any other items to be pulled from the consent calendar? If not, the chair would look for motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items ninety-nine through two twenty-seven inclusive, with the exception of item two twenty-seven.
No motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That got us to the end in a hurry. We are on to items number, let's see, to two twenty-seven, which is assessment rules. Deb, would you please read that in, please?
Number two twenty-seven is Resolution 2011 dash zero five three B, levying assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property. Now, yield the floor.
Do we have a motion, please?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker. Your mic, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Under our procedures, I would like to divide the question and consider item two separately from the remaining items.
Okay, yeah, let's look here real quick, I believe that is item, item number two on the assessment rules, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there any objection to division? If not, the chair will declare it so. So we are dealing with items one through eleven, with the exception of item number two. And chair would look for a motion to approve the assessment rule, items one through eleven, with the exception of number two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're on to the assessment rule on item number two only, please. Could we please have a motion for discussion?
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I would like to ask Mr. Reins a question concerning his complaint here.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Mr. Reins, after looking up some information, it's my understanding that you've also been before the city before, in 2007, with litigation with us prior, is that correct?
I'm not clear on the question. I'm now before the city council, you, could you be more specific, so I can understand?
In 2007, were you also filing a complaint civilly with the city? Is that correct?
I, I believe, I, I can't, I have, I cannot without records be precise about the dates, but I was prosecuted criminally by the city, in approximately 2007, and maliciously, I might add. The prosecution was dismissed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reins. And today, I noticed in your complaint, Mr. Sheeblick, even according to your own transcript, I don't see any area where he made that promise. All I see is, he said he could do that, he didn't say that he would. Is that correct?
Mr. Reins.
The colloquial meaning of "I can do that" is "I will do that," and I think you know that well.
Thank you, Mr. Reins.
Okay, further discussion, the motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Motion passes with two noes, Alderman Quaker and Alderwoman Peterson. Bonding my apologies, I was going through the cadence, I didn't see your light. Okay. Okay? I think she's, okay. Okay, thank you, everyone, for the discussion. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar, we're on to the non-consent public items, that is item two twenty-eight, two twenty-eight. See, could you read that in, Deb?
Thank you. Number two twenty-eight is second reading ordinance number fifty-seven twenty-four, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh six of the chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Miscellaneous Code, rezoning the within described property as requested by Center Line for Flump and Lump LLC for rezoning from Park Forest District to medium density residential district located north of intersection of Founders Park and Philly, Philadelphia Street, approval in conjunction with the planned development destination. Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, in conjunction with a PDD. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
I have a question for management, in that, how often do we go from park forest to medium density residential district?
Vicki?
I just, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess I don't have an exact answer for that as to how often we do. I will share with you that the property to the south of this is office commercial, and the property to the east is medium density residential. So we saw this as an extenuation of one of those zoning districts, and we definitely thought the medium density residential with the planned development would have the lesser impact on the existing residential development to the east.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The PDD, is it already existing on this property, or are we adding this to it?
Vicki?
It's already existing. It requires that an initial and final plan development be submitted, once those plans are finalized, for the planning commission's review and approval.
Is there, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Is there any reason we need these PDDs in these cases?
Vicki?
In this case, because it's zone medium density residential, you can only have one principal structure per parcel of land. The applicant's proposing to create one larger lot and put several buildings on one property, so this benefits him. You have another question?
No, I just, no, it's, they've done a nice job over there, it's a nice, very, very nice facility, so, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, in conjunction with a PDD. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Pauline, the bill list, please.
The bill list before you is for a total of ten million, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, seven hundred and twenty dollars, sorry, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-six cents.
Can you zoom in just a little? I can't, I'm not going to be able to read that. Thank you.
Let me go this way.
Has there been any changes?
There are no changes, sir.
Yep, chair would look for motion for approval.
No motion.
A motion and a second to approve the bill list for ten million, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents, correct?
No, sir, you want the total on the bottom, ten million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-six cents.
I don't know if my glasses, like, turn off, let's try it one more time. Thank you. Can you zoom in just a little, there, I can see it. Okay, the motion on the floor is for approval of the bill list, which totals ten million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-six cents?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're squatting pretty good there.
Yeah, I know I am. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Green, do we have an executive session?
Yes, it would be for the purposes permitted by S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two.
Now, before anybody asks, can you be more specific?
Subsection three pertaining to litigation.
Thank you, very good. Could I have a motion, please? We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, we're in executive session. We have a motion, second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We have a motion and a second to adjourn, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.